Like to call the committee of the whole meeting, May nineteenth, twenty twenty two order. Thanks for coming, everyone. Just like to get started by acknowledging that we're pleased to be here today on the traditional territory of treaty six. We acknowledge all of those who share a deep connection with this land. The city of Beaumont respects the histories, languages and cultures of all of Canada's first peoples, whether they be of First Nation, Métis or Newt descent, and appreciates that their presence continues to enrich Canada's vibrant communities. We are all treaty people, the peace treaties bind us all. Thank you. So we have a nice and full agenda today. Just looking to see if there's any modifications to the agenda at all.
No.
Anything from admin, any modifications?
Thank you, Chair Nukirk. We currently don't have any modifications to the agenda at this time.
Okay, thank you. Just looking for a motion from a committee member to approve the agenda. I've seen the mayor's hand up. Okay, all in favor? Say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, look unanimous to me. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to the next section, which is presentations and delegations. And we'll be welcoming the Western States Hockey League on to give us a presentation. Do we have Ron White and Brian Brown on here?
Just adding the right now.
Yes, just adding them right away.
Perfect.
They're in the green room, I think.
Perfect.
Hello, guys, ladies.
Perfect. I see a Brian and a Ron. Ron, is your audio working there?
Yeah.
Perfect. Sounds good. Well, thanks for coming. I'm Steve Nukirk, Chair in the Meeting Deputy Mayor right now. Welcome and thanks for coming to our committee of the whole meeting here. I'll turn it over to you guys to provide the presentation that you guys presented. And we'll follow up with questions once the presentation is done, if that's okay.
Yeah, I just need to pull it up on my machine.
Sure.
I just had it here a moment ago and I gotta find it again.
How are things looking over in Beaumont as far as the COVID nineteen issues?
I would say the same challenges that everybody that everybody is having. You know, the region is doing a good job chatting amongst each other to make sure that they're doing as many things as they can concurrently as to not have different things happening in different communities. I think that's probably a challenge right now. But yeah, everybody's making on and things are slowly coming back to life, so.
Yeah, I know. I live in Vegerville and yeah, things are, we're, yeah, we're, we're starting to come to life over here again too. So that's a good thing.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm sitting in Las Vegas. And literally had my first meal in a sit down restaurant last night in two months. So it was kind of nice. It was almost a to- total new experience almost.
Of all the things to feel happy and thankful for, hey?
Yeah. And was able to have a cocktail and, you know, that it was quite pleasurable. It was just a, you know, mediocre chain restaurant, but it was sure nice.
Nice. So will you guys be doing a share screen then for the presentation or what were you hoping to do there?
What we sent you guys the presentation. To be honest with you, I'm not sure how to share my screen.
Oh, just a second here. We got a present.
There it is.
Right here. Perfect. Case, thank you. Then perhaps we can just scroll along with the presentation then. So yeah, Ron and Brian, you guys are off. It will turn the table over to you to get through here. The presentation will follow with questions. Thank you.
All right, well, we're pleased to have the opportunity to talk to you all. The Western States Hockey League has completed twenty six seasons. Started in nineteen ninety three. It was formed in Southern California. There was, had never been a junior league out in the Western United States up until the formation of the Western States League. We were at that time members of USA Hockey and were members from ninety three to two thousand eleven. During that period of time, we grew from six teams to about twelve or thirteen teams in, in two thousand eleven. And then we, we left USA Hockey because of a variety of, of new protocols and so on that they were putting into effect. That really did not benefit us way out in the West. And since that date, we've grown dramatically. Have teams throughout the Western US from the Canadian border to the Mexican border. And then a year ago, we branched off into Alberta with four teams. And the premise of, of the league is, excuse me, is to place as many players into college as we can or the, the professional ranks. And a gentleman by the name of Don Thorn, who is a PhD in chemical engineer is the gentleman that formed the league in nineteen ninety three. With six teams originally and they were, four of the teams were in California, one was in Phoenix, Arizona, and one was in Las Vegas. And it was a pretty loosely run show. Don was not really a hockey guy. He had a son that was junior age, had aged out of, of youth hockey and he put it together. Stayed on as commissioner for three years. And then he came to me and I was, at the time I was in the ice rink business. Had five sheets of ice in California. And Don and he and I had been friends. Our kids played at the same youth hockey club. And he came to me and said, would I take over the league and also the team that he owned? Because he just wasn't set up to, to handle all of the issues that, that come from running a hockey league. And I took it on. And at that time, I, I was the, besides being a rink owner and owning five sheets of ice, I was heavily involved in the state of California Amateur Hockey Association, which was USA Hockey affiliate. And I was also the USA Hockey District Coach in Chief for the eleven Western States under USA Hockey. And so I, I stayed in that position for fifteen years as the coach in chief. At the same time, sitting on the Junior Council at USA Hockey for the same period of time. Because that's when I had taken over the Western States League for Don. The, the six teams went up and down from six to, to four to eight to nine. At one point in time, we had six teams, one of which was in Dallas, one of which was in Tulsa, Oklahoma. And the other four were in Southern California and literally we, we had to take the airplane to, to those games. And it was a fairly expensive proposition in those days. We started our showcase in two thousand and three, which originally we just did, held it at the rinks, one of the rinks that was the home team for one of our teams and about the third year, we moved it to Vegas, to Las Vegas. And it's been there ever since. That's our main showcase of the year. The last three years, we've had over a hundred and twenty five colleges and universities in attendance, including some from up in a Canada. It's a huge event. You can imagine getting a hundred and twenty five colleges there. We literally, because most of the colleges in the US are, that play hockey are on the East Coast or in the Great Lakes area. We literally host those hundred and twenty five coaches. We provide a travel allowance to get there. We provide lodging. We provide meals and ground transportation. So literally, they almost don't need to come with any money in their pocket. Because the showcase goes from eight in the morning till ten at night and, and we provide everything in between. We last year had fifty some players. We don't know the exact count going in for this current school year. But the previous year, we had over fifty graduating players go into college hockey in the United States. In two thousand and eleven, we joined the AAU, which is the Amateur Athletic Union. It's a large, very large sports organization. It actually hosts forty two different sports, all the way from, from cheerleading, badminton, basketball, football, ice hockey, roller hockey. Pretty much you name it, they host it and it's a, not just a national organization. Now they've expanded and are in several international countries with sports programs. And we are there, kind of their premier hockey organization. When we came over to them, they asked if I would become their midget and junior hockey director for the AAU, which, which I am, the national director for those two age brackets, which also includes roller hockey, I might add. No, excuse me. And so we've had, we've had a, a steady growth. We've had been with USA Hockey, now we're with the AAU. And we have terrific insurance under the AAU. If you you know, you're gonna own a rink and you're gonna want us, us to provide you insurance, liability insurance and so on. Not sure, well, I am sure what the Hockey Canada provides, but we provide you with twelve million dollars worth of liability insurance. And each one of our players has a hundred thousand dollars of medical accident insurance should they be injured, which includes dental. So they could literally have up to a hundred thousand dollars of dental work done if that was the injury. The we provide each rink with a certificate of insurance with the twelve million dollars coverage and I mean, it's, having been in the sport of hockey since nineteen seventy seven, I think I've seen pretty much all of it. And this is the best insurance package that, that's, you know, available in the sport. In fact, in most sports. We provide, once the season starts, each team can have twenty six players. We can have, we're, we're sort of an unusual league in that our teams in Alberta can literally have fourteen European or Asian South Pacific players on a team. Same with our American teams. They can have fourteen Europeans. We call them imports on a team. A team in Beaumont could have twenty six Americans on it if it so choose to draft in that fashion or recruit in that fashion. If I own a team in the US, I could have twenty six Canadian players. We treat all Canadians, Mexican citizens and US citizens as one, one entity. So what's good for one is good for all. And then like you say, everybody else that's an international player beyond that, we can have as many as fourteen on a team. And many of our US teams in fact do have fourteen. Once the season starts, every game that we play is broadcast on the internet, live in color. And it's also on the internet with live scoreboards and the page that I have up right now, actually the title of it's called Live Scoreboard. And that's what it looks like before the game starts. And if you wanted to, let's say, watch the game on the top left corner, the Edson Arrows game versus Oklahoma City. You'd click on that scoreboard. And then literally everything that happens in that game, every shot, every save, every penalty, every score is enumerated down a list of what's going, what goes on. So when you tie that in with our live internet video broadcast, you have a pretty much a complete presentation of, of the game. And our live video is done through Black Dog Enterprises and each team is duty bound to broadcast every game. It's HDMI quality.
There it is.
Pardon me?
It's on here now. He just moved it up to the right page.
Oh.
The live scoreboard.
Okay. So the, but when, when you combine the live scoreboard with the live video, it's a one heck of a, a presentation. And it's every game. And if a team for some reason doesn't broadcast, doesn't use the live scoreboard for some reason, maybe their internet's out, whatever. You know, they, they, they have to pay a fine and so on for not, for not delivering it. The live video is a cost to the fan who wants to, to watch the live video. And the teams participate in fifty percent of that revenue. Maybe I should stop there for a moment and ask if anybody has any questions to this point. Okay, I'm gonna go then slide down a couple of pages. The
You're wrong. Just a second there.
Yes.
Yeah, on, on the screen, I forgot to mention that there's a little raise hand function. So if anyone has any questions, they'll hit that. And then that'll twig me to, to bring a question in. So I think we can let you just kind of finish up your presentation and, and then we can get some questions in if that's okay.
Sure, sure. So anyway, we, we run a very professional operation from a standpoint of on game nights, for example, we have a group of four people that literally, when games end and they, they end anywhere from ten PM to eleven thirty PM. We have a group of four that literally review all major penalties, all ten minute misconducts and make whatever disciplinary decisions that need to be made before the next day's games. We have two referees, actually two referees in chiefs and then a, an assistant referee in chief up in Canada. That we all work together, ma- making sure that the, the games come off the way that we like them to. The college coaches that follow our league, when it comes to Black Dog, we literally supply them with a annual subscription. So that they can watch any of the games and the players that they choose and want to recruit. Just a minute. We need to advance the page. How did you say to advance the page? There we go. The two special events that we have each year, we talked about the showcase. And the showcase is held in Las Vegas, has been now for fourteen years. We do it as a rule right before Christmas. The colleges go out on Christmas break. Finals start around the twelfth of December and most colleges are out by the fifteenth or sixteenth. And we do the showcase right after that. So the coaches can literally make it to Vegas. This past year, the showcase was December seventeen, oh no, it was December sixteen to twenty. This year it's seventeen to twenty one. Again, we, we provide all of the travel, the meals, lodging, et cetera for it. We get about six to seven hundred fans, families, spectators, so on, coming to it. And it's quite an event that we put on and it, it runs the league and the team owners a total of about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars to put that showcase on and provide the travel allowance and so on to all the colleges to get them there. Which is, the key thing is, is to get them there so that they recruit. And literally, after each game, the, the locker room hallways are just loaded with college coaches interviewing players right after the game. If we want to move on to the next, next page. The, this is a, this is a list. It's pretty hard to read, but these are the hundred and twenty some colleges that were at the showcase this past year.
There was also some drop ins.
Yeah, yes, plus some drop ins. Yeah, we, there's always somebody that shows up that we didn't know was coming. Literally, we stay, we host the event at the Stratosphere Hotel and Casino, which is the tallest building in Las Vegas. And we literally take between teams going in there, we had twenty four teams in there this year. Spectators, college coaches, we had over a thousand rooms in the hotel. And we pretty much, that four days that we're there, we pretty much own the place. Because the period of time in Vegas, that week before Christmas is the slowest week of the year in Las Vegas. There's no, no conventions, none of that kind of stuff going on. So we're a pretty big ticket for the hotel at that point in time. We also had this year, teams from a related AAU league that's over in the Ontario area of Canada. They had two All-Star teams that came and played in the event also. Okay, we want to advance the this, and the second biggest event we do all year is the Thorn Cup. It's named after Don Thorn, the original founder and commissioner of the league. And it's an event that moves around from one location, a team that, the teams can bid on the event. At the start of the season, the board of directors selects the, the home, the home ice. That team that wins the bid automatically gets invited. They become a wild card team. And we bring in four division championship teams and a true wild card team and then the host wild card. So we end up with six teams. Two flights of three, play three games going in the round robin. Top four teams advance all the way up to where we end up with a, a champion. And it's a five day event, a lot of hockey and and interestingly enough, Axel Adams from over in, in Edsonwood is going to bid on it this year to see if he can be the, the host team for the showcase. Or I mean, excuse me, the Thorn Cup. And it's the second biggest scouted event. By the time we do this, college hockey's over, college budgets are gone and our budget's low. We don't, we don't sponsor colleges to come to this. They, if they want to come, they come on their own, their own dime, we might say. But it's a great event and unfortunately, this year because of COVID, the week that our playoffs were to start was the big outbreak in Seattle of COVID. And we have two teams in the Seattle marketplace. The owner and coach of one of the team's wife is a, is a a nurse at major hospital and she had been exposed to the virus, which means he was exposed. And he had exposed his team. We had to cancel those two teams from going to the first week of playoffs, which there was quite a we took a lot of flack for that, but we, we just could not see sending two teams from Seattle to Salt Lake City. And which had at that point in time, no evidence of COVID. And within five days of that, we canceled our entire season. On the same day that the NBA canceled their season. So we've been, we're pretty observant to things like that in this coming year, in fact, because of COVID virus and the fact that all of us have a long laundered list of, of restrictions and governmental agencies that we have to abide by their rulings. We, we've planned our season to start one month later than normal. But we've also have a backup plan that if we don't see clear indication between now and end of July, that we will likely cancel the season. Cause we're not gonna get involved in having European kids come over and get stuck in the US if, if there was another close shutdown and so on. So we're, we like to use an abundance of caution when we're dealing with these kinds of incidents. So.
Maybe you can get to the, the final slide here, Ron?
Sure.
We're getting close on our time here.
Okay. The, basically, these are the things that we go through when we bring on a new team, a new ownership, et cetera. They have to provide us with, with financials for anybody that's an equity, equity owner. In turn, we assume that they are supplying the same types of things to the rink that they're going to use. We require a, at least a letter of intent from the facility. So that we know we have a, a building to play in. Every one of our members that is an adult involved in one of the teams is, has to participate in what's called Safe Sport, which is a a US Olympic team subsidiary stressing safety in sports for minor, minor age children. But anyway, we, a team has to provide a bond to play with that, to play in the league, a performance bond basically. And each team serves three years as a probationer and member. And, and after they've performed for three years, then they become a full equity member in the league. And financial arrangements, we have league fees, officials fees, our showcase fee and then other assessments, but in twenty seven years, twenty six years of operations, we've never had a special assessment to, to any teams. So we do a pretty good job of budgeting. So that's pretty much the league. We are looking forward to building more teams in Canada, especially Alberta. We are also talking now with some people over in Vancouver. So we would hope to have five to six teams this year playing in the, the province, assuming we would hope to have five to six teams this year playing in the, the province, assuming that you know, we get to play hockey this year. And I'll stop there and answer any questions.
Good. Thanks for the presentation. I see one hand up so far in Martin. You're up, Counselor Stowe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to, is there an age restriction on the, on the players? I assume this, these are not adult players, but I, I couldn't figure out how old they actually would be.
It's standard junior age, which is under twenty, twenty and under.
Okay, thank you.
Now you can, we can have a twenty-one-year-old if he turns twenty-one January first or later.
Okay.
But the problem with that, if he does that, he loses a year of eligibility in college. So it rarely, it rarely happens.
Thank you.
Hey, Mayor, you're up.
Thank you, and I appreciate the presentation today. Just a quick question, what, what's your ask of us today? Is there an owner that's wanting to bring a team to Beaumont or what?
Yes. We do, we have a couple of different people. One, one of which, interestingly enough, a year ago, I brought my team from Long Beach, California and moved them into Barhead. And we have another team from Southern California whose rink is closing and not going to reopen because of a variety of reasons. The gentleman wants to move his team up to Canada. And so that team is, is a active participant, you might say.
Okay, so they're looking, so they contacted any other communities or what's, yeah. What, what's the goal here today?
Well, the goal, the goal today is, is to hopefully get to a spot where you're comfortable having one of our teams in your building. And then we take the next step of choosing which individual that's going to be.
Well, there's always deals to be made, but the question is, what, are you asking us for a financial support or are you just asking?
No, no, we're, we're, we're going, we're going to be a customer.
I'm Mayor Stewart. I'm, I'm Brian Brown. I'm the Director of Operations up here in Canada. I'm Ron's right-hand man in Canada. And yeah, what we're looking for, Mayor, is to house a team in your building. We have all of the financial backing and everything to host the team. We just need a facility to play in and we have reached out to a few other facilities and towns in the, that are in the close proximity of the Edmonton area, just because of flying players and whatnot. Europeans in and it just makes it so much easier to be a fairly close, you know, and it cuts down on travel time to the other communities and whatnot. So that's what we're looking for is to see if we can beg and plead with you guys to, to house a junior A tier two hockey league team.
Have you submitted your requirements of like your ice time and stuff like that to our administration yet? Because right now, I mean, to be honest, we have fully booked ice times right now and our community groups are begging for more ice time. So a lot of this is going to depend upon what your actual requirements are in, in in, in time and space. And we already have the Beaumont Chiefs, which is a junior team as well. So yeah, it just sort of depends on what your requirements actually are and we can go from there.
Yes, and sorry.
Basically, our teams, our teams practice four days a week. And it can be anytime and during, you know, daylight hours practices, they don't have to practice, in fact, it's, it's better if they don't practice at night. Our schedule, we pay a fifty-one game schedule. Fifty-one to fifty-two, depending upon how many games we play at the showcase, but with typically it's forty-eight home and away games. Twenty-four, so twenty-four home games. And typically those are done in either two game, two games per weekend and in some cases, three games a weekend, if in fact, like we have a team in Cold Lake. Well, when they go all the way across to Hinton or Edson, it's just a lot cheaper to do it in one, you know, take, not three games instead of just two. And so, you know, we're looking at approximately four days a week practice. And like I say, it could be anytime during the day. Most of our teams practice between the hours of eleven and three.
Hey Mayor, looking at your line of questioning there, what do you think are the best next steps for these fellows if you were to give them some direction from here?
Well, my, my next, my next best step would be to put a proposal in writing on what you need and, and submit it and then we can, our admin can take a look at it and see. That would be, and see if it'll fit in. Like, I'm not saying no outright, but until we have some hard things to look at.
Yeah, as in help us understand what you need, what your timing is, what your schedule is. You know, ice time, all that kind of stuff. If you can get some of those details together then, then poke them back to, through our administration and then they can vet it then.
That's not a problem. I mean, it's, it's pretty much a cookie cutter within the league. As I say, most teams practice between eleven and three, you know, a start time somewhere in there. We, we, we need probably the key element, we need a locker room because we have so many out of, out of area players that in billeting, the billets just don't like the hockey gear hanging around the house. That type of thing. And we do, you know, most of our teams that are there out of a twenty-six-man roster are billeting probably fifteen to sixteen players. Just depends on the locale and that type of thing.
Yeah, it sounds good. So I think, yeah, thanks for the presentation. If you guys could have those as takeaways. Get some of those details back and organize your thoughts and get them back through administration and be in touch with them. And from there, they can see what kind of facility timing and the logistics of, like you say, a dressing room and some of the other needs and and, you know, we'll see where the conversation goes from there. Does that sound fair, Ron and Brian?
Sure.
Yes. Sorry, Ron. Originally, when I had talked to Sean, I did give him the information of when we would be looking at practice times and whatnot and, but yes, by all means, we'll, we'll put things together again and, and send them through to you again. Absolutely.
Yeah, no, that would be helpful. Okay, any final questions of council before we take the next step in the agenda here?
Well, thank you for coming in today, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Put your eyes in.
Ice?
Yeah.
Wouldn't you actually, correct me if I'm wrong, but usually it goes in end of August, early September, depending, and then comes out March, April, depending when playoffs and stuff ends.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
Okay, thanks, guys. Thanks very much.
Bye now.
Bye.
Okay, Administration, you'll be up here next with the our connectivity transport master plan. Let's make a quick motion though, just to accept that as information, if someone could forward. Okay, Bill, sounds good.
Move, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Everyone in favor for accepting that presentation as information, say hi, raise your hand.
Hi.
Unanimous, thank you. Now I'll move on to our connectivity transport master plan. Stephen and Kendra will give the presentation and we'll kind of do questions to follow the presentation unless there's something really pressing in the presentation, so.
Thank you, members of committee today. So we're here with the updated transportation master plan, which has been long awaited. It's been last office in front of council in twenty eighteen. We've taken it away and done a considerable amount of work to get it to this conclusion here. We've been out for some public engagement recently, talking about the transportation master plan. We have Stephen Ranks, who is our municipal planning intern. He's done a significant amount of work helping us compile this plan and bring it to where it is today. So Stephen is going to go over and take you through the TMP. We did provide you with the plan and a summary of changes that have happened since the last time you saw the plan. So if you do have any questions, Stephen's happy to take those at the end and I will turn this over to him. Thank you.
Thank you for the introduction, Kendra. I'm assuming my voice is coming through clearly, but if anything falters with that, just flag that during the presentation and we'll be able to accommodate. But good afternoon to everybody, to the committee members and everyone who may be viewing via the live stream. We have a presentation today. We have the slide deck set up right here, which we're sharing now. And so to situate this, the original intention was to present this to the committee on March seventeenth, however, due to changes because of COVID nineteen, we had to cancel that meeting. And so we'll cover what has happened or we'll cover the plan at a high level and then discuss what's also happened in the past two months. But this is the, this is our connectivity, the transportation master plan. This is a non-statutory master plan for the community of Beaumont, providing high-level strategic direction for the transportation system. And the intention would be to pass this by resolution once we are completed handling and drafting this plan. And so the outline for the presentation today, we're going to run over the project history, talk about what's occurred in the past two months, as I kind of alluded to at the start of the presentation. Do a high-level overview of each chapter of the plan and then be covering questions at the end. This is just due to the plan being, you know, pretty strategic, high-level, a lot of concepts are interrelated, so we'll save questions for the end when we've kind of completed the piece as a whole. But if there is something that is pressing, like Kendra had said, we can address that. And just final note before we hop in, of course, this is the draft version of our connectivity. It's subject to change, as you'll see on the subsequent slides. We do have a planned public engagement and further external circulation. And of course, we'll be taking feedback from the committee as well. So that may impact changes going forward, but we're happy to be presenting this today. And so to cover the background of the project between twenty sixteen to twenty seventeen, this transportation master plan was being drafted in alignment with the municipal development plans development, the creation of that document. And so there were several concurrent public engagement events where we were soliciting feedback on and ideas from the community on both the municipal development plan and the transportation master plan. And for the transportation plan, we heard a lot of high-level ideas of what community members in Beaumont were hoping to see with regards for a safe system, a safe transportation system, a system that provided choice and a system that had regional connections. And so this instilled a strong foundation for the plan that we continue to work on between twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen. And in that period, we further refined the plan that we were working on based on this engagement, based on feedback from council, based on best practices as well as policy direction from other strategic municipal documents and regional sort of policy direction as well. And so in the last year, we've completed engagement in January that provided a high-level overview to the public of the plan. And then we've been able to share the plan since the early springtime, making it available for people to see, but we'll be doing a concerted public engagement sort of period over the next little while. I'll discuss that later in the presentation. And just to discuss in a high level, the changes that would have occurred between, over the last two years of refining the plan. We were focusing on bringing this document up to date, ensuring there was a consistent level of policy direction throughout the document. Not being highly prescriptive there in the policies and the maps, but ensuring, ensuring we stayed at a high level and stayed strategic. We rewrote goals and objectives and policies to sort of more thoughtfully categorize these ideas, objectives being measurable and policies being actionable. And then finally, there was a large focus on increasing the user friendliness of the document by reducing the complexity and length of the plan. And so this involved reducing the overall number of sections, placing the strategic direction at the very start of the plan and allowing this sort of vision to filter through and percolate through the rest of the objectives and policies. So now we'll go into covering what happened in the last two months. And so the original intention, of course, like I said, was to bring this forward in March. But of course, we've had this situation occurring, so administration wanted to ensure that we were able to continue working forward on the document. So we were going to bring forward a very basic, non-designed document to committee and then also to the public. But in an effort to continue working and to ensure that the plan was not stagnant, we focused on updating the document design that's been shared with you all today and that will be brought forward to the public as well in subsequent engagement that's occurring. Then we also completed a external circulation with some key stakeholders to try and highlight or indicate if there were any large-scale issues that they may see with the plan. And so that engagement is coming to a close today and we're just beginning to summarize some of the feedback that we've received. And so far, what we have seen is nothing too major, but we do have to take a closer look at that overall. So now what we'll be doing is covering each section of the, or each chapter of the document. So we just start a brief review of the introduction. This just discusses internal and external alignment, discusses the project history with a focus on the engagement that occurred and then provides a standard guide on how to interpret policy, which is a standard within our sort of suite of policies that we have at the city of Beaumont. So now onto chapter two, which, like I said, when discussing how we restructured the plan, we sort of shifted that strong strategic focus, that sort of design approach to the beginning to allow this to sort of set the stage for all the policy or the objectives and policies that would fall out of that. And so this document is based on the design approach of complete streets that has been approached in a contextually sensitive way for the city of Beaumont. It's not that every street is a complete street with all modes being provided for within infrastructure, but it's focused on a complete network. So we're able to provide for all modes in the overall transportation system and allowing for realistic transportation choices for both residents and visitors to our communities. And the two principles that are sort of baked within that design approach are the eight-eighty approach or the eight-eighty principle, where if we design for those eight to eighty years old, we have a broadly accessible system and then the pedestrian prioritized approach, which is recognizing that pedestrians are innately the most vulnerable, you know, modes of transportation. If we ensure that these sort of users of the system are safe, the overall system will be safe on top of that. And so this design approach is placed at the beginning of the document and sort of percolates further through, like I said. Following this design approach is the context of each mode establishes what's going well and what could be improved upon. And then we have a trend section that provides for more nuanced policy direction going forward, allowing us to sort of see what may be coming in the future and how our policy could adjust for that within the next ten to twenty years. And this was sort of inspired by the experience of Beaumont last summer with Ella. And then finally, the vision and goals are set out. So these provide the starting point for the specific policy direction within the document. And so as mentioned, within the second attachment, the covering document, we rewrote these visions and goals, keeping those ideas in place, but ensuring we had the right sort of ideas in right places. We shifted some of the things that were more measurable and actionable out of those vision and goals and made the vision and goals a little bit more concise, easier to understand, and then placed measurable and actionable things within the, the objectives and policies respectively to ensure that it was a more coherent document, it was easier to understand. So now we'll start getting into the policy sections, which are split into vehicle movement, active transportation and transit. And all three of these sections contain all of the policy direction and they're structured in a similar way, where they cover key considerations, which kind of reflect on the context, discuss specific topics, and then the objectives are listed, which are those measurable goals that we're hoping to reach for this specific mode. And then the policies are listed at the end, which relate to both the key considerations and the objectives themselves. And so for the vehicle movement section, which focuses on vehicle movement, this includes private automobiles, this includes goods and service movement. The key considerations include things such as roadway classification, speed limits and access management. And so from some, as I just listed, like some of those topics, plus the additional ones covered within the key considerations, they inspire the objectives and the policies, the objectives of the section being to develop a roadway that's multimodal in context, using a range of approaches to address the needs of an evolving transportation system. And finally, the third objective, coordinating on a regional scale or roadway network. And based on the objectives, based on the key considerations and the vision and goals above, as well as the context and the design approach, we come to these policies. For this section, we're providing direction to guide development in alignment with the TMP. So this is discussing things such as access management or transportation impact assessments. discussing things such as access management or transportation impact assessments, where also providing direction for how vehicle movement should be managed and monitored. And this looks at congestion management techniques and intelligent transportation system technology, providing direction for roadway design and functioning. So this would be how we build the roadways using solutions in the appropriate places like traffic management or applying specific kinds of speed limits or intersection improvements. And then finally, the last sort of area of the policies that are described under this section are ensuring that the roadway network aligns with regional plans and supports collaboration with our neighbors. So now we'll move forward to the next policy section, which is focused on active transportation. So the key considerations, some of them include for this section, the ideas of a complete network for active transportation and what that would look like, end-of-trip facilities or intersections, and then how active transportation relates to that. And so the objectives that sort of fall out of those key considerations are inspired by the vision and goals includes providing safe, convenient and reliable infrastructure for all ages and all abilities who are getting around actively, developing a complete network for the transport, for the active transportation system that reflects the land use context and coordinating the planning and management of active transportation connections with regional partners. So not just looking or looking at that regional perspective for all modes across the board, including active transportation. And so some of the policies, some of the broad themes that we see in this section include defining what makes up the active transportation system, what are the kinds of tools that we're using to provide people with space to get around actively. And then this will guide the development of the system going forward. And then it also specifies how planning and development of the active transportation system are integrated within the planning process via various methods to sort of instill greater connectivity, like filling missing links or integrating end-of-trip facilities in certain locations or in general locations, sort of broad categories there, or planning land and planning land use and transportation networks in a way that supports route choice, providing people with multiple options for getting around. So that covers the active transportation piece. Now we'll go to the final broad section of policies, which focuses on transit. And so the key considerations here, some of them include a reflection on what sort of demographics are using transit and what we need to think about there with our policy direction. And then also discusses things like regional and local or the potential for local transit, as well as other potential for a park-and-ride facility. And the objectives that come in this section are focused on planning transit facilities and routes that are effectively integrated with both active transportation and the land use that surrounds them. Harm, another objective is harmonizing local and regional transit to increase service provision as Beaumont grows. And then coordinating the planning and management of transit services with regional partners. The policies that lead, help us fulfill, like lead us to actioning these broader goals that we have include we're providing direction for the planning for an expansion of transit with a focus on accessibility and frequency, connecting to important destinations, having transit being supported by increased density and mixing of uses, planning for transit priority measures as well. And the final sort of area, providing, we're providing direction for what frequent local transit could look like and increasing regional transit could look like, and a park-and-ride may eventually look like. And now we're on to the implementation section of the document, so that's chapter six. And so a full implementation plan is to be developed by administration following this plan, but we provide a high-level sort of overview of what an implementation or a sort of implementation guide within the plan. And this ensures that we don't, again, get too into the weeds. We're not being too directive and specific. We're providing the right amount of direction for this plan for administration to continue moving forward with the goals that are established within the plan and integrating this within our work going forward. And so approaching implementation in this way allows for us to be more responsive to changing conditions that a municipality faces, which is more pertinent now than ever. And allows us to be working in more dynamic and coordinated manner. The three categories of actions that are within this section include developing the policy and regulatory framework, building complete networks and then monitoring and maintaining the system. And they're sort of, this is all on page sixty-three, but they're structured in four time horizons, ongoing being continuous focuses of the municipality, short-term goals within five years, medium-term goals within five to ten years, and then long-term goals that beyond that tenure mark. And again, like I said, this is all depicted on page sixty-three and provides a high-level overview with what will be the direction of the municipality going forward and will be further lined up specifically in a detailed implementation plan to follow. And of course, there's two following chapters of, or there's the appendix or and all of the maps following that. But that covers the document itself. So now we can discuss next steps. Like I said, we did do a partial external circulation to move the ball forward in some ways, but now we're going to move forward with a full external circulation to stakeholders, as well as doing public engagement. And so in the near future means that period of time is May twenty-fifth to June twenty-second. That's what we're planning for right now. And so we're just beginning to finalize those details. And the close the loop folk, focus of the engagement means that we're bringing forward the themes that we were able to draw from community input that sort of valuing a safe system, valuing transportation choice, valuing regional connections. We're bringing those back out to the public. And we're asking, do you see these values reflected in the plan? And additionally, do you think there's anything missing? Where we, did we miss some of your perspectives? And so this will occur over a four-week period and we're very we're very cognizant of the conditions at play right now and are trying to facilitate an online engagement experience that's as inclusive as possible and allows for meaningful engagement with the context of that question that we're asking. And of course, following all this work and recognizing that this is a draft document, further work may occur with it, dependent on what we hear from the public, dependent on what we hear from council, dependent on what we hear from external circulation. But the eventual recommendation would be that our connectivity, the transportation master plan be forwarded to council for final approval at a subsequent council meeting. So thank you very much for allowing me to cover this topic with you all and review the work that administration has been completing over the last few months, over the last few years on this project. And we really look forward to answering any questions or taking in any feedback that you may have.
Sounds good. You did a good job at discerning that large document down into the presentation and kind of chapter by chapter overviews. That's great. Looking for any questions or comments from council right now. I don't see any raised hands yet, but probably there's some out there. And if not, I'll start. So. Anyone? Perry, yeah?
Here we go. Thank you. Fantastic presentation. Fantastic document. Just want to just remind all, back when this thing first started out, I believe it's the Canadian Diabetes Association offered an opinion at some point, whenever you get this to this level, that they could also have a look at it. They have people that review these type of plans to see how there's a plus or minus to their, their situation with respect to diabetes. So if you wouldn't mind adding them to your external stakeholder list, that'd be great.
Thank you very much for flagging that.
Perfect. And the rest of the hands raised all at once. I'm just going to start at the top and go, Mayor Stewart, you're up.
I appreciate that. Thank you. I didn't need to go next, but I just wanted to say, great job on that plan. It was it was a long but interesting read. And I, and I thought it did a really good job of providing good guidance based on class of road, whether it's a collector or commuter road, that sort of thing, without being too prescriptive to give our, our development community lots of guidance and lots of options and to be able to do these roads properly and to build the complete community. And so I don't have a whole lot of questions. I just wanted to say fabulous job and, and thank you very much. And looking at the timeframe on it, that was, it was a real long time in coming. And so sometimes good work takes a long time and we're, we're better off getting it right than having to redo it again in two months. So appreciate the work and, and thank you very much.
Cool. Councilor Stowe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'm gonna reiterate that as well. I liked virtually everything I'm seeing and reading in there and support all the, the this, the, the concepts and ideas that have been put forward. My, my chief concern with anything like this, we can have the best plan in the world. We don't achieve anything unless we can implement it fully and thoroughly. And, and you already addressed, I think, how we go forward and, and start to implement. One of the things that, that, so congratulations on an excellent document and, and a good, a good presentation of it. One of, one of the, one of the things that I look forward to seeing in this, and this partly stems from the, the non-prescriptive nature that we've taken, which I think is the right course again, is that we offer guidance and, and we drive this on, on goals and objectives that we want to achieve to support the vision that we've laid out. I'm thinking, reading through this though, that our roads are gonna have to be wider in a lot of cases. And I, I mean, there's not much we can do about the ones that are already built, but the ones we're planning and bringing forward in planning documents I suspect are gonna have to be wider to accommodate all these things. And I'm interested to know if there's any thoughts. And clearly, when we get to the development stage, a new development stage, I mean, the developers are frankly, will want to build the narrowest road they can, because that's the, the least expensive option. So interested to know whether you agree with me that, that we think roads will end up being wider as a result of that. And if you do, then how do we actually achieve that?
Thank you very much for the question. I think the, yes, looking at the road is sort of the base unit of what would build up the network. And of course, we do have some situations where we're constrained with what's already built. And I think the exciting piece of focusing at the network scale is the recognition that roads are one of the units, but we're also able to place transportation infrastructure, especially with regards to active transportation infrastructure that can be placed not on the roads themselves, but elsewhere. You know, heading through or being placed through our open space system, just to ensure that roads don't become too wide. But also ensuring that the, whatever additional infrastructure we're building to provide for all modes can still provide that same level of connectivity is something that I guess this plan is trying to address and building towards that complete network idea. And yeah, so I see your point of, you know, we're discussing more things, so that may mean our roads may need to be wider. But we can also be viewing this sort of system approach of maybe more efficiently utilizing the infrastructure that we do end up building, so that we don't necessarily have to build something to the widest extent to service, you know, traffic conditions at peak hours when traffic is the most. There may be a way to, through implementing this plan, manage congestion in a more efficient manner, so that we don't necessarily have to build the roadway out to its absolute maximum. We can encourage people to be taking different modes and provide a strong network with many route options that would prevent all of our roads suddenly, you know, exploding in width. So I hope that does a good job of addressing your question. Kendra, you can feel free to add in any comments, but yeah, that would be my response to that.
Okay, thank you. Kendra, did you have anything to add?
Yes. So one thing to add to that will be that the, physically the roadway right-of-way will not generally need to be wider. It's just gonna be more efficient with how we're using that, making sure that we're repurposing that space adequately as we design those new neighborhoods. So just making sure that we're preparing for all types of transportation, not just the automobile on the road, right, providing those off-street opportunities as well to have a complete connected neighborhood. Just having them.
Okay. And by the, by non-road connectivity, you were talking sidewalks and trails? I assume?
Another passion. Feel it coming, Martin.
Sorry.
That would be correct.
Sorry, sorry, Steve. What was, did you not hear me?
No, I heard you. I was just saying that I feel another one of your passions coming up. You keep going.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, the, the plan covers this. I mean, there's, there's, there's ambitious stuff in there. And I look at the maps and compare it to what we actually have. And there's you know, there's a lot of gaps or a lot of things that need to be added. And yeah, it is. I'm, I'm completely in favor of supporting other means of transportation than an auto, than just an automobile, but we have to address that the private cars are still what most people are going to be using. But yeah, I want to provide everybody with, with as many alternatives as possible. Yes, active transport, yes, transit where that's, where that solution is feasible. But then we have to recognize that the roads have to be built to accommodate that. The trail system has to be not just capable of, the trail system has to be integrated. It has to be connected in with, in with the sidewalks. And I think that the plan does that. My real question is how, again, do we, do we actually implement that? It's, it's one thing to have the goal and another thing to to actually make it happen, to convert it into reality. I just want to draw your attention to, here's what I was thinking with the, with the widths of the roads. And I'll see if I, I should have noted this earlier. Just give me a moment while I try and find, there's a diagram on the plan, on the plan here, which shows quite early on in the document, which shows the
Be on page fifteen.
On page fifteen? You're way ahead of me. I think you know what I'm, you know what I'm talking about.
I also know the plan pretty well, as we have been working on it pretty consistently over the last year. So don't feel bad about not knowing exactly where everything is.
Well, there's a diagram that shows two streets, right? One, one with two lanes of traffic and another one with two lanes of traffic and a cycle lane, and I assume a separate transit lane. So yeah, my, as soon as I see that, my thinking is, yeah, you're, I've got it on page sixteen, actually.
Sixteen. Oh, I might be looking at an older version, but good catch.
There's a diagram there that shows a twenty-meter road right-of-way with complete streets vision applied above and complete streets vision below. Okay.
I, I can explain this a little bit. I think what you've noted here actually is a good flag that we, we should communicate this a little more clearly. The intention of this diagram is actually to show that a twenty-meter road right-of-way can provide for all of the modes below, but can also be done in a way as it is shown above on page fifteen with just two lanes of traffic and then parking on either side. The twenty-meter road right-of-way width is pretty representative of what is available on Fiftieth Avenue. I'm trying to apply the right street label name. And I'm pretty sure it's Fiftieth Avenue, but Kendra, feel free to comment in if I'm misjudging that. But what we're trying to communicate here is that we actually, in some of our roadways, we've actually built in a ton of access capacity that could be more efficiently utilized going forward. And so this, this shows the maximum extent of what a complete streets vision would look like if applied to the nth degree. This is not what we will have on every single street, but just is trying to communicate that we all are able to utilize what we already have a little bit more efficiently.
Yes. Okay. So that's, that's, that's good in this, in terms of retrofitting what we already have. I, I guess if we're looking forward though to future planning, we also have to build a twenty-meter street if we're gonna do this on it.
And I, this sort of comes back to the previous comments that Kendra and I shared in responses that we're looking at that complete network and we're seeing, we don't have to have a cycling track or a multi-use path on the road itself. It could be set back behind houses, so still providing a similar sort of connection within the community without having an incredibly wide road right-of-way. And then also we can be more efficiently using the road right-of-ways that we currently have. The widths of lanes themselves may, may be able to be narrowed if we're able to build infrastructure in that way. And in narrowing some of the sort of vehicle through lanes, we also can slow down traffic and ensure that people are commuting through the community at a safer speed, because the drive, the road itself feels like it should be slower, more slowly driven upon. So yes, I think it's definitely, this has been a real root of the conversation that we've been having internally and was very, a very significant theme with the basis of information that we were working off of with engagement, with feedback from council previously, with best practices. And so it's a conversation we'll continue to have. And as we move into implementation, I think we will be able to move forward on some of those concepts that you've highlighted.
Cool. Counselor Stowe. Cool. Counselor Stok, are you good or we move on to?
No, we could, we can certainly move on to another question. I will. There are a couple of questions that I may ask later, but let's, please give somebody else the mic.
Do that then. Counselor Barnhart, ear up, please.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Mr. Raiz. That was a great presentation and a great report. It, it seems to me we're already living a lot of the the principles and working towards this and that. And it's a good plan. It still gives us lots to look forward to. My question isn't that far off from where Counselor Stout was going. If you look at the map for the active transportation, I don't know what page that is, sixty-seven in the report and eighty-seven in our agenda. And for the pedestrians, it's always been a challenge for me because I walk in the community around the, the shopping mall. And so Montalais in that area, the pedestrian walkway just ends. And you have to get across cars and, and parking stalls and, and you really take your life in your hands some days when it's really busy. So I'm just wondering, is there anything in here that we, that supports fixing that? Is there anything we can do? I, I know in the past it was challenging because that land doesn't belong to the city. So anything you can say about that that can help us?
Yes, a really good point to bring up and something that reflects one of the driving intents. You know, if we're going to provide transportation choice, we, we can't allow for those situations to occur to pedestrians. We would never imagine in a million years to build out a development and have a roadway just end in the middle of nowhere. But sometimes we've seen that with sidewalks in the past and it's very prevalent kind of based on the approach to transportation system planning that's been taken. But this does kind of, or this plan would set a different direction. And one of the pieces that was flagged in the presentation that I think really pertinently connects to what you've just presented is there is a focus in the policy direction to be closing those missing links, to identify those. And because those projects can be really quick wins, it could literally be fifty meters of sidewalk that just needs to be completed. And so that's not a massive infrastructure investment, but that's something that can really change the experience of, you know, when everybody's out walking or rolling around, to have that stretch of sidewalk closed and that missing link filled can really improve their experience. So there is the policy direction that sets that out. And so the active transportation map as well, it, it denotes sort of the high level network that we're hoping to build out to. And so it wouldn't cover every single missing link that may be present right now. Because you know, we, we, it would be extremely valuable to be going out to the community to understand that. And through the implementation of this plan, when we focus on that policy direction of closing missing links, that would be a phenomenal time to reconnect with the community and see what are some of these quick wins that could occur to fill in some of those missing links. So really appreciate.
Follow up then. It doesn't sound like we're gonna be able to fix every problem we have. I know that's not possible. But can, can you give us any idea of what it would take? Would it have to be a negotiation with that landowner to fix the problem in that particular area?
So I may defer to Kendra for this question, as I do not have all the specifics on that certain area of the city.
Yeah. Hi. Thank you, through Counselor Barnhart here. One question for you. Can you just clarify for me again which area on the map you guys are speaking of?
Sure, I can. It's in the, the northeast quadrant.
Yes.
But it's on the, sorry, no, the northwest quadrant. It's in the Cameron area, development area where Rexall is located, Sobes, et cetera. There's a trail that just ends right there. And then the rest is parking lot.
Right. Yes, that would require us to do a land usement to go through that private property.
So that would be. Thank you.
Counselor Barnhart, is that all for you then?
It is for now.
Cool. Onto you, Counselor Danlock. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, Stephen, great presentation. You really know your stuff on this and the report. Thank you very much for clarifying a very, very heavy document. Quick, quick question. On page thirty-one of one seventy-four, I didn't write down the actual page number. It talked about Sault Ste. Ville having excess parking capacity and suggestions of using parking elsewhere. Could you maybe clarify what that paragraph was referring to, please?
Absolutely. So the discussion on page thirty-one, and I'm just scrolling to it right now. But there, there has been work completed in the past that looks at the amount of parking that has, that is provided around the center of Beaumont. And there was a recognition that at certain points of the day, there is excess capacity within the parking lots that are available, as well as the parking stalls that are further out. There may be experiences of times when the parking lot is completely full, but for the, for a large proportion of the waking hours of the community, that it may not be, that land may not be most efficiently used as parking since there is available space, available parking, as well as alternative choices that people can be making. If we have stronger active transportation ties or eventually something like local transit connecting people out in the community to this location. That means that we may be able to more effectively utilize that space to allow businesses to be opening out into like on-street patios or to recon, or contemplate what the development potential of those areas may be. I may also defer to Kendra here if she has any additional comments on this aspect of parking in Sault Ste. Ville or Sault Ste. Ville.
I concur with Mr. Raiz's comments that he has the parking is concurrent. I guess we had two studies that were done regarding parking in Sault Ste. Ville and both have indicated that we do have an excess of capacity within that despite there being certain areas where maybe the, the demand is quite a bit tighter, notably on Fiftieth. And as some of that, so we have been looking at different things like that. The Sault Ste. Ville plan does address the parking challenges within Sault Ste. Ville for that particular area, but being able to reallocate that certainly and being able to repurpose that provides a more, I guess, a better community feel, right? Where you see those patios that spill over onto the street or different ways of being able to utilize that parking so that they're used more often for more periods of time versus just that particular period where it's actually busy, right? If at all. So I think that that's something that we'll be looking at through the implementation policy as well.
Okay. If I may, Mr. Chair, a slight follow-up on that then. So are we possibly suggesting at some point in the future that the existing parking lane that's in front of the insurance office, for example, or moving north towards the Mac store on the east side of the street, those parking spots could be perhaps taken away and using different things? Is that what we're suggesting is a possible future? Just curious about the idea of repurposing some parking spots in that main strip of Sault Ste. Ville? If that's what the suggested plan may be in the future, which is gonna be down the road a little while, I'm sure.
Absolutely. So with this being a high-level strategic plan, it wouldn't be dictating certain decisions in certain places. I think referring to this as a possible future is, I, I think that would be appropriate, that this is something that could occur, but based on the current land use context, it may, it may not make the most sense what the current development in the area looks like right now. I, I don't know how soon we'd see Macs spill out with a sidewalk patio, but if that site were to be redeveloped sometime into the future and there would be a business who would be really excited about expanding their potential and spilling out into the public space and you know, in, instilling a certain vibrancy on, you know, Beaumont's main street, then that, that is a possible future. But I think, like you said, I think it is a little bit further out, but this plan is to be looking further into the future and provide for those possible futures in a contextually sensitive way. So I hope that does a good job of addressing the comment.
Yes, thank you. A quick follow-up, Mr. Chair, please.
Yeah.
On page forty-one in the active, active transportation section, we're talking about, again, walking paths, a passion of my colleague, our colleague on council, Mr. Stout. Is there, there's a policy here, I read through it again this morning, and just trying to get a clarification how the walking path policy fits into this transportation master plan, please, for the, for the completion of our walking paths around our city.
Yeah. So I'm, my understanding would be that we're assuming, or we're referring to the Open Space and Trails Master Plan, which would have been completed in the mid-two thousand and ten's. And so that was a plan that was and I guess on top of this now, there's the, I'm, the name is escaping me right now, but it would have been the I can, or Places in Play. There we go. That plan, which, you know, has moved forward, was something that was contemplated and referred to in this process and impacted the eventual outlines of what our active transportation network looked like. So there was a connection made there. And another piece of our, the more internal end of our process included a circulation of the transportation master plan, a draft of this during the winter to all other departments. So we were able to connect with the Parks and Rec folks, as well as the folks who created our Places in Play. And they were able to engage with their plan and provide comments and any sort of direction on this. So there has been that connection drawn and it sort of explicitly outlines itself within the active transportation network maps. And then also we did make an effort to ensure that we had alignment. And of course, there's this sort of broader alignment that would have been brought about by the municipal development plan and that the municipal, municipal development plan was providing direction for our Places in Play, was providing direction for our connectivity. So there's, I've, I've covered a few separate areas, I guess, where we're striking alignment.
Yes, thank you. That, that helps me very much to understand them, all different plans mesh together. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, sounds good. A few of my questions have been asked. There's a couple left, though. As this document was coming out and getting ready for the committee, the whole meeting, I had ironically had a community member reach out to me and talk to me about pathway creation versus tree and vegetation creation, as in an area behind their houses, he's being told is slated to have a pathway come through, which is fine and well, but you only need so much room for a path in a, in a nice stand of trees. And then secondary, you know, a contractor saying, okay, well, we need eighteen meters of room to get our equipment in to make this five-meter path. So if you could just speak to the, you know, the transition on, on how that comes together. When you're prioritizing making a trail versus, you know, keeping the vegetation in place, anytime you create more edge effect, the studies are out there that the more meters of edge you have, the more meters of fallen trees, fallen timber, vegetation aspects are all affected with that. Maybe just some comments on that, and then I have a couple more. Thanks.
Yeah, I can provide a high-level sort of comment and then I'll pass it on to Kendra. But with this being a strategic plan, we're, there's not a, a strong focus on the operational aspects of creating some of this infrastructure. So that might be a little bit of a gray area with, that comes forward with this plan with regard to that topic. But there is a recognition that there are several things that can be supporting active transportation corridors. And that would include things that, you know, like benches, maps and signage. And, you know, there's inherent reflection that having vegetation, natural tree stands, being able to protect active transportation infrastructure makes it more resilient, you know, especially, you know, if it's raining and that sort of thing, to have a tree canopy is actually a wonderful thing to ensure that you can cycle and get a little bit less wet or be outside and be a little bit more protected. But that doesn't specifically pertain to this context. And so I'll, I'll pass it along to Kendra here to add on some thoughts.
Thank you, Stephen. Happy to help with that. I believe I probably can have a little bit of context for dealing with a very similar issue. And of course, type trans neighborhood right now has been an ongoing point of discussion about what the level of trail happens to be, what the width of a trail would be as you go through here, accessibility of our trail system. It's been an ongoing point of discussion for many years. As to that, you know, we're wanting to preserve tree stands, but oftentimes when we want to construct those asphalt trails, we have to remove more trees than is intended. So you know, whether or not you have a naturalized trail and you don't need to put the asphalt down, those are different things that will be considered as part of the area structure plan or the outline plan as we do the drawing reviews and different things. So we'll be considering that at that stage, how those impacts go, what the actual design of the trail is at that time. We could be looking at things where we're reducing trail went through there. We're trying to minimize the impact to trees and the vegetation through the construction methods that we're using, as well as maybe you're replanting those trees post-construction to create a well-treated useful area for everybody to use. So that is something that we are looking at and trying to work through as we plan our trail network to have that connectivity. But obviously going through existing developed areas is a little bit more challenging. Best practice would be to get those trails in before we put those houses in. But that's definitely something that we have been working with and we are working with that particular developer to address that issue right now. So.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you.
If I could just tack on to that a little bit, the exciting thing about this plan is that like Kendra had noted, we're, the best practice would be to do this from the get-go. And that's what this transportation plan helps us do moving forward, is that we have this stronger strategic and policy direction that would be brought into those discussions with developers. And we'd be able to find a better route forward in creating this infrastructure and connectivity within our community without having to go back into places and have to disturb what may be present at that place. So that doesn't cover the entirety of the concern, but it does chart out a much more positive vision of how we can be approaching this in the future.
Sounds good. Thank you. And near the front of the report on page thirty-six, there was a little bit of a lightning rod of a, of a couple of words there, which is traffic calming. I haven't heard a whole bunch of positives back from residents who were involved in the plan in two thousand and seventeen, the design charrette there. I participated in. There was a lot of people who were frustrated with the terms traffic calming. And I see it pop up again in here. I just wonder if you could speak to that, how, how it will be employed. And I offer that one of the traffic calming measures in front of Churchill and Pizza Hut is the crosswalk. And that crosswalk I find to be one of the most dangerous crosswalks in Beaumont personally. You know, having people standing out on the road and whatnot. So if that's a traffic calming measure, which has been described before, then I worry about some of the other things that, you know, we might contemplate doing. So if you could just speak to traffic calming, that'd be great. Thank you.
Absolutely. So yes, there was the recognition within the engagement that we had completed that there are a variety of perspectives on traffic calming within the community. And as a result of this, I think it's, it's contemplated in a pretty high level. It doesn't, as a key consideration, we aren't diving too deeply into it. We, the, the transportation plan or transportation master plan in a way is just trying to provide all of the tools within the toolbox that we may be able to employ. So traffic calming being a potential tool to employ is our sort of approach to it and that we would want to include it so we don't preclude ourselves from utilizing traffic calming in the future in a very contextually sensitive way. And we were sort of, it was apparent that we should include this sort of topic because the theme of safety in our transportation system was very, very clear in the engagement that we had completed in the past and also reflects the best practices by finding ways to calm traffic in a very contextually sensitive way, in a way that is not frustrating or doesn't create confusing situations for people. That is a way to make our transportation system more safe. And I guess another piece of this plan is that, of course, we're going to have this engagement going forward. And we may hear some of the feedback that you've just presented echoed in the community. And so that may impact the way that we approach how it's outlined in the plan. But then also, this is a plan that will be renewed in the future. And so five, five years into the future, or further into the future, sorry, when we're renewing it, there may be better ways or a better understanding of how we can be doing traffic calming within Beaumont that then could be more explicitly outlined in the plan. But we, at this point in time, just contemplated at a very high level.
If I can pig in there, just some examples of some traffic calming that we would be using. So they're mainly physical design measures that are gonna alter that driver behavior, right? So that's where you look at narrowing the road wide away at certain points, having bulbs out so that it's safer for pedestrians to cross. It also makes it shorter distances for them to actually get across the road, which is helpful. But you could be looking at things like raised cross, raised crossings, raised crosswalks. But you could be looking at things like raised uh cross uh raised crossings, raised crosswalks. We could be looking at some speed tables, that sort of thing that might be some of those traffic calming. So it doesn't only have to look like more of that auto linking that you see on. There are lots of other ways that we can explore traffic common in a way that's needed for that particular road because something that we might do on a local neighborhood road. Would be something different than we would do on the archerial.
Yeah, no, and I, that's great. I I think that clarification is important so that residents understand that. I know there's. Some test sections of that raised bed and stuff like that in the Duke right now when you head towards the golf course. So I'd. Like to hear what they had for an experience there. Uh, I got two more hands up. I got Counselor Hendricks followed by Counselor Stowe.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, just uh on the traffic calming measures, uh, uh, let's not forget the European drumpel. Um, the drumpel uh was gonna be used at one point on the ring road and uh certainly fifty six A Street. Uh, could have used the a drumpel or a couple just to assist those people along those streets. So. Uh, I say I keep waving the flag for the drumpel. Uh, the other one is just on the uh. The pathway system, it's certainly uh. It's a, it's been a, it's been a tough one to just nail down into uh. Not only policy but design and that it doesn't change. Uh, generally what happens is the uh. Uh, developers will come with their take on a new subdivision, uh despite the fact that we've got. Uh, our thoughts on where these trails should go, uh, they'll come to council with their own thoughts on whether or not they should even be there and. Time and time again, it's been before council and it's been an argument and it's been. Uh, hotly contested issue. Uh, there's been arguments that wow, there's a sidewalk. Parallel to the pathway. So why would we have both? I I think we somehow got to nail it down that. These pathways stick. And then when they're, when they're in place, that they come to council uh. Uh, with the planners in tow stating that, yeah, all best efforts have been made. Um, if in fact the pathway change has to be made so that this issue goes away. Um, I've been at too many council meetings where that's been a fight and uh, I just assume somehow get it cemented in stone that. It sticks. So that that'd be my thoughts on pathways.
Yes, and to reflect on that a little bit, um, with this being Beaumont's first transportation master plan. It will provide us, I think, with a stronger spine, with a stronger foundation to be working off of in um those discussions and how we build our community. And then having um that sort of vision for the active transportation system and those pathways set out in our connectivity. As well as in our places in play means that we're sort of duly reinforced. Um, and so that might, that I think will change the way that we have those discussions going forward. Um, to a positive effect.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, counsel Stowe, looks like yours is the last hand here. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, yeah, uh, a cou- couple of quick comments. Couldn't agree more with uh than with the. Counselor Hendricks's comments just there. Um, yeah, other than my thoughts as well is, and I alluded to this earlier is, you know, it's great to have a good plan. How do we make it stick? And I'm hopeful, Mr. Rights, uh, Ms. Raymond, the that's having this overall. Mass uh uh this overall plan and uh was not so much a planner as a. Policy directive and objectives that 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 helps us, that provides us with the lever to to make those plans stick. And oh, and just as an aside, yes, on traffic calming, um, I was um. That's one of the reasons I support roundabouts, a lot of intersections instead of traffic lights, because that has a profound traffic calming measure. Um, without and at the same time aids flow as opposed to impeding it um generally. Uh, under assuming it's designed correctly for the for the appropriate intersection. Um, all right, the question I wanted to ask, um, on page, let me again, excuse me. While I find it on page thirty nine of one seventy four in the agenda package, it's page nineteen of the document. Um, uh, this discussion of roadway networks. It includes the sentence, active transportation is provided for within regional trail. From uh, ah, sorry, excuse me. Active transportation is provided for within regional trail connections that may run in parallel with highways. Um, I'm not aware of any trail connections in Beaumont that run in parallel with highways. Um, Counselor Hendricks has alluded to. In the past, the possibility of a trail connection between here and Edmonton. Elessley, I suppose I should say, because we've now got a border with Edmonton. Um. Is it, are we proposing to to build something like that? Is it, and again, I I understand this is not prescriptive. You're not saying, yes, there shall be this, um, but it at least includes, i- is that what that's alluding to? That sort of possibility?
Mm-hmm. We can probably rewrite that sentence to make it a little bit more clear that we don't currently have this kind of thing, but it is. There is a potential for this kind of thing, but yes, that's what the plan would be. As we heard within the engagement from the community, it was valuable to have. Regional connections for all modes. So um, for people who may be getting there actively to have. Uh, active transportation corridor that would run along a highway, you know, displaced enough to provide for a comfortable enough experience for people of all ages and all abilities. Um, would be the eventual goal and also reflects um direction coming from the region as well um with the city of Edmonton's. Um, sort of Matt uh municipal development plan and transportation master plan molded into one that. Current draft that they have, it does indicate that there would be a connection south to Beaumont and um we. Would be able to provide um a completion of that connection and also fulfill the policy direction that's set. In completing those regional connections for all modes.
Okay, good. I that's, that's, you know, again, that's something I'd be supportive of. You'd probably no surprise to hear that. Um. With regard, yeah, and with regards to Counselor Hendricks' comments as well about, well, why have we got um trails alongside sidewalks? Well, as far as I'm aware, if I ride my bike on a. On a sidewalk, I'm actually committing an offense. Um, and the and the distinction in places between them isn't clear. Um, you know, for I'd refer you, for instance, to the bottom of the hill of at San Vitale on on the east side of fiftieth. Um, of fiftieth street, there's a trail system coming in there that get that extends all the way virtually to trail to um. Forest heights. There's a trail road that that just connects into the um, into the sidewalk and apparently you'd be cycling up the hill. On the sidewalk. Um, there's, to my mind, there needs to be a trail all the way up the hill or. And if it's too steep, maybe it needs to be a switchback. Um, but um. Again, it's, it's, and and again, I think the document allows for, uh, I think the strategy, the document you've just presented allows for possibilities like that. Uh, the only issue is who's going to be constructing it and paying for it, I suppose.
Yes, that that sort of idea is very much in alignment with what Counselor Barnhart um had. Uh, brought up a little bit earlier in the idea of missing links. Um, that sort of idea that you've just presented, Counselor Stowe, would be a missing link for. Um, someone who is cycling around. Um, or, you know, people who are using strollers. Or uh maybe in a mobility device, um, to use uh that narrow of a sidewalk may provide for some pretty considerable conflict. Um, and so widening that to actually allow for that missing collect connection to be bridged would be the policy direction of this. Um, this document and I do really take your point of, uh, you know, possibly having switchbacks. That's a way to be achieving. That all ages, all abilities and um that to ensure that, you know, it isn't too steep of an incline. Um, these are all things that are contemplated within the plan. And when the right development opportunities are brought up. Or there are initiatives that the municipality undertakes to be closing some of these gaps, that's when these projects may be taken on.
Okay, thank you. Can I just raise one further, just one last comment, which is that um, I've been involved with the cycling without age pro- program. Where there's a tricycle rickshaw. Um, and I noticed whether when they give you and in order to do this. You registered as a pilot for the, a a peddler for that. Um, in order to do this, they give you a bunch of directives and some training. Um, there's a map they provide which shows the places that you shouldn't use the. The cycling without age rickshaw and exactly that up fifty street. Um, from the bottom of the hill to what towards the church, they say, don't do it. And yeah, if you've ever now. Which means that, but that's a key link in Beaumont between different parts of town, um, which means that. You know, without some alternative, there's, there's no way you can use a facility like that. Um, and I think it's. An important admission and yeah.
Yeah, I've I've also been able to uh volunteer with that group too. And it's interesting to see. How they is sort of like beyond the ground perspective have of the community. I know one thing that they're really excited about now is um. The eventual upgrade of the one bridge in Four Seasons Park. That was one thing that like was a. But to have that missing link being bridged already without the direction of the transportation master plan. Uh, sort of indicates that with this policy direction, we'll hopefully be able to move. Uh, considerably further forward with some of these missing links because we have that direction now. So, well.
Sounds good. Yeah, I got Counselor Hendricks and then I think we're good.
Yeah, thank you. And just uh, just, just to be s- crystal clear on the, on the pathway conversation. Uh, I think the pathways, which has been studied and studied and studied, uh, should stand on their own. Um, the arguments that we get from developers that there there could be a parallel sidewalk in the area that could offset. That leg of the pathway, I don't agree with. Uh, the pathway should be the pathway and the sidewalks should be the sidewalks. Uh, and the two should not be used in conjunction with each other to try to create this overall link. Uh, I know we had multiple uh committee levels of discussion, be it council, be it the subcommittees and all the rest. To try to, try to nail this down. Uh, and we're still struggling with it, uh, even through these documents. Uh, just would like to see it pristine standalone pathway package. That's it. And then sidewalks. That's, that's a different kettle of fish for a different reason. The two, the two should not mix, in my opinion. Thanks.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. That's a, I greatly appreciate your insight as someone who's uh relatively newer to the community and has only been working in this sort of context for. Uh, just over a year now. It's uh, good to gain a greater understanding of that. And the, although we've had, um. You know, these pathways sort of master plans in the past, the piece of the transportation master plan that I think. Provides the most support for differentiating these things is a recognition that um, we have. A a active transportation is in itself two different modes. It's people wheeling around on scooters or skateboards or biking. And then it's also people walking around. And so having those two things be discreet means we need to be.
Right.
Supporting them in a variety of ways. And so that does support that pathway conversion.
Yeah, and and let's, let's remember, uh, there's an old saying, you can't get that time back out of your life that you put into these committee levels. But there's a lot of public consultation to uh to get this nailed down. So, you know, it's. It's just one of those things that it's a carry forward. It's got to stick somehow. Look forward to that. So.
Cool. Well, uh, I don't see any more hands raised there. So I'll look for uh. Uh, who wants to put the motion forward to accept it? Mission, you see Counselor Stowe.
Oh, I mean, we accept this for information.
Perfect. Uh, all those in favor, say aye and raise your hand, please. Aye.
Aye, aye.
Yeah, unanimous consent there. Now, we've been at this for a bit, so I propose that we'll do a five-minute recess and uh recon. And uh, see you all back shortly. Welcome everybody back to the May nineteenth, twenty twenty committee of the whole. We're moving on to item three C now, the Beaumont Sport and Recreation Center operational update. And I'd like to pass it over to administration, uh, with Amanda Cuthbert to give the presentation. Thank you.
Afternoon, committee. Uh, yes, uh, the purpose of this report is to provide the committee of the whole with an informational update on the operational planning. For the Beaumont Sport and Recreation Center. Uh, so the center was uh, expansion was approved in September twenty eighteen. Uh, we're expecting substantial completion to be completed January or July twenty twenty with a soft opening scheduled for September twenty twenty. Uh, we've been working away since September on the planning um and have some packages put together for your review. Uh, at this time, we are looking at some additional risks for the project. Uh, and this would be around Alberta Health Services approval. Of opening and operating recreation centers uh with the requirements coming out of the province for the COVID nineteen relaunch strategy. A lot of unknowns right now. Um, so we're making some plans in the background, um, if things like that are coming to us as risks. Um, a few things that are attached to this report. Uh, one was the operational. Beaumont Sport and Recreation Operational Update, uh, a draft business plan. Uh, BSR twenty twenty cost recovery model, uh, and the twenty seventeen Beaumont Aquafit Operational Analysis. Uh, what I thought I would do is just go over the PowerPoint with you to highlight a few things and then provide the committee some time for questions. Yep. I'm gonna try and share my screen with you now.
Looking good.
Excellent. All right. So yes, September twenty eighteen BSRC construction was approved and announced. All of us were very excited, residents, council and staff, uh, to have some new opportunities. We took a look at some goals that we wanted to uh work through as we were doing our planning. Um, continue customer service during construction and look at increasing our customer service after the center is open. We wanted to continue some kind of recreation during construction. Uh, we knew we needed to work on how to best utilize this facility to its capacity. And we really needed to revamp our current policies and practices. Uh, so a lot of work in the background going on. Uh, we operated till the end of uh twenty eighteen, uh, when we had to close the fitness center. At that time, we moved our fitness classes over to the community center, uh, quite successful, uh, little kinks with the move over, but overall very happy. Uh, members and guests and it worked really, really well. Uh, over time, we've been looking at our membership structure and developing some processes there. Uh, we did a recreation software update. Uh, we looked at guest services structure and tried to figure out a way that we could best. Service our customers and our clients going forward. Um, a lot went on in twenty nineteen and I think one of the highlights that I want to. Share with the committee is when the pool closed in December twenty nineteen, we actually looked at our stats and we had put through. The most children that we had put through in swimming lessons uh since twenty ten, since yet, uh, since the Aquafit Center opened. So. A very exciting day, I think, for the staff that it was less than ideal conditions with parking and construction. Uh, but some really good news came out of that. Over six thousand children would put through swimming lessons that year. Uh, into twenty twenty, our recreation master plan was approved, our allocation policy. Uh, and working on some F F D details and ordering at this point in time. Uh, so in our planning, we took a look at what we needed to have. One was our membership rentals and services. So these were the. Areas that we uh have been planning for. We have a basic membership, so this membership will allow access to our pool, fitness center, walking track. And spontaneous use. Uh, this membership does not give any access to any structured program. Uh, the plus membership would give you everything that the basic membership has. Plus, we would give you uh drop in. Fitness classes would be the additional service that you require for the plus. We have included then planned for a walking track membership. So individual. This only to the walking track will have that option. And of course, we have the senior access membership. So seniors sixty plus will receive free access to the. BSRC between twelve P M and four P M. So this is still the same program that we had at the Aquafit Center. Rentals, we know it's going to be a very busy facility there. Uh, we've seen that we've put a request out for allocation for the season for the twenty twenty. Twenty twenty one season. Uh, lots of requests coming in as we're working through that. So our local volunteer groups, CBOs or user groups, will be working through the allocation process with their facility booking clerk. So far, that's been going really, really well. Uh, after that process is done, we'll be able to start taking some general bookings. So basically, uh, your birthday parties. Events that you would like to have at the facility, if you want to have one-off rentals in a multipurpose room or a sport area. And services. So we've kind of lumped a lot under this one. So child mind, this is similar to the service that we had at the Aquafit Center. We called it playtime at that point in time. So it will be uh, we will be operating an approved licensed child mind service. Uh, so it's intended to be similar to a babysitting service. So uh, guests and members can come in, uh, leave their children in child mind. Uh, use the facilities within BSRC as long as they stay within the building, service that they can take advantage of while they're working out. Using our recreation uh amenities. Spontaneous use, so basic drop in um activities. So we will have this um sporadically throughout the facility in different areas and different times. Um, fitness center obviously uh is going to be open at all times for people to be able to come in and drop in. Uh, pool drop in uh as well. So you'll be able to come do swimming. We do have the same challenges as a number of other pools and. And same challenges that we had with the Aquafit Center that very busy time in the pool from about four to eight, four to nine. Um, so there will be limited um space to be coming and doing like a free swim or a public swim. But for the most time, uh, on the weekends, that will be available. Uh, I agree now, we expect there'll be. Arena, we expect there'll be limited spontaneous use to come drop in in the arena. The one thing that we did look at is our Ken Nickel Shinny and public skating. So we have that service at the Ken Nickel. It is free. The intent is to keep doing that and offering that at the Ken Nickel. And we'll take a look to see what others. Public skating and shinny that we can add at the BSRC. Other drop-in activities that would take place in the gymnasium, badminton, volleyball, basketball, pickleball. Be looking at soccer and some field sports in the turf field house. The climbing wall. We're currently in some conversations with an operator for the climbing wall. This seems to be the most effective way to operate the climbing wall and provide the best services for residents, for members. The climbing wall will have four sides to the wall. Climate specialists will supervise and instruct the members. We are trying to work with having some conversations, making sure that there is some open climb times during prime times, party packages and group bookings. Equitable access. So we heard a lot of this when it came out of the Recreation Master Plan. So there's a few organizations that we worked with in the past that will continue of making sure we can provide some services and contact information would be Canadian Tire Jump Start Kids Sport Information. We also have our own recreation subsidy program. So this is where people can apply to our, our program. With, once they're approved through their application process, then they would be, receive a credit and they would be able to take advantage and register into Beaumont Programs. Use it as drop-in. If they wanted to do spontaneous use at the BSRC or put it towards a membership. And discounted swimmings, we're going to try Saturday evenings to have a family swim. So it will be at a heavily discounted rate. So we want to do that so that we can increase that prime time opportunity. To provide some other access at a cheaper price point. Programs. I think this is one of my favorite ones. We have created resident priority registration. So Beaumont residents with a T4X postal code will have the opportunity to register two days prior to non-locals. We had a lot of feedback about this over the years. Of people trying to register in swimming lessons and everyone gets up at six o'clock in the morning, tries to register. And it's very challenging. We have a lot of people from the south side of Edmonton that were using our facility, especially for swimming lessons. There is a lot of residents coming to Beaumont for our swimming lessons. So we have started this program that we're shooting for fall to have that start. So basically anyone with a T4X postal code will be able to register two days prior to non-locals. Similar how we've run our programs before, all programs will be offered at a cost that will break even to our direct expenses. Programs will be based on the needs and interest from community members and recommendations for our CBOs. Our intent is to become more of a feeder system, a learn-to, so that that way resident, residents, members can come. Try the programs here and then move on to another community volunteer organization. Sport equipment. So I thought I would give you a chance to take a look at some of the equipment that we're going to have in the facility. So fitness center, we have increased our cardio equipment. Some strength equipment and then some small equipment as well. That we've added. So some bigger areas, a synergy unit and athletic bridge. So it's going to give us some more options for some fitness training in the fitness center. Gymnasium, field house. So sports that we have purchased equipment for was badminton, volleyball, pickleball, floor hockey, basketball, dodgeball. In the field house, your field sports, flag football, lawn bowling, soccer, lacrosse. And our arena, hockey nets, shooter tutors. In the pool, we are happy that we have a whippet on order and we're looking at an accessible lift. Currently we have a ramp. It's not ideal. We are looking at that other option. In our multipurpose rooms, we are going to have quite a few of them. So ordered enough chairs and equipment to be able to fit them out for multiple different sizes and meetings. And what is to come? So we're in May, equipment purchases. So we have a lot of items that have been purchased and we're receiving and we're madly storing and finding room for. We're finalizing some of our, our service plans. In June, we're intending to do some staff recruitment, hiring fair. By then, our allocation is expected to be done for the BSRC by June 30th. In July, we're going to clean up our operational practices, put those into place. We're planning a membership tribe and the intent with that is to make sure that we can get as many people signed up for membership prior to opening the door. So we're kind of limiting those lines, things like that. So we're working on a plan for that. And then in July, we should be able to move into the building. In August, we would have fall registration begin. Equipment would be commissioned. We'll be setting up the fitness and sport equipment. And of course, installing signage and furniture will be some big jobs that will be happening. In September, we'll, we'll be finishing up our staff training with a soft opening and a grand opening. That is it for my presentation. I wasn't going to go through all the other documents. I thought I would leave this open for the committee to ask any questions that they have.
Perfect. Yeah. Thank you for the presentation. Personally, I had a few highlights out of there. The walking track only pass, I think is awesome. The T4X postal code two days early is just incredibly awesome. That's a huge box to tick for residents. So well, well done on the implementation of that. Discounted swimming and making a family night and the whippet on order is amazing. And yeah, the janitorial efforts and AHS requirements will be the challenge moving into fall and hopefully, you know, the province and AHS figure out a way to how to open up these facilities in the fall. And thank you for identifying that as a risk. So with that, I see two hands up. I see councillor Hendricks and followed by councillor Danlock.
Thank you. Just to comment on the accessible lift conversation and perhaps the YMCA could assist. They've had a lot of experience in, in, in that area. So I just, I just throw that out. So thanks.
Perfect. Councillor Danlock. You muted there.
Sorry about that. Hit the mute button and didn't, didn't take place. So thanks, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, Amanda. Just a couple of quick questions here. So on the walking track membership, I'm assuming we'll be using some sort of a wristband way to lack of better word, police the access to walking path only as opposed to going to get changed and then walk into the fitness center and, and having a workout, then hit the walking track. So is that the intention to sort of differentiate walking memberships with a special wristband or even having them people in, in the gymnasium, having a wristband to differentiate them? How are we going to be policing that? If you will, what's the, what's the expectation on that or the plan perhaps?
Yeah, walking track membership will have its own membership wristband. So that was a little different. There will be a monthly membership for the walking track or annual membership, I believe. So basically you would almost get like a silicone wristband that you would take home. You'd be responsible to wear every time you came in. So you wouldn't always have to be checking in. You could use your wristband, go take advantage of every month, the wristband would change a little bit so that we would be able to police that. Difference with your wristband when it's a member or you're paying admission, you would come scan your membership here. Membership card or pay your admission, you would get your colored wristband of the day, similar to what we've done at the Aquafit Centre.
Okay, good. Thank you. Also just echo Steve's comments on the T4X idea. That's, that's fabulous idea. And what is a whippet for the swimming pool? Sorry? You mentioned, is it, is it a whippet you called it or?
I do call it a whippet. Yes, it's a large inflatable. So.
Oh yeah, right. I remember that.
A wipeout type system that you'd have put into the pool. So.
Like a floating island kind of thing?
Right.
Yeah. Okay. Good. Awesome. So I just, one last thing, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman. So on the climbing wall, I know we've talked about having out a separate provider for that or separate operator for that. What are the thoughts in terms of a contract with them? I'm just concerned that perhaps there'll be a separate interest fee for that, obviously, which is fine. And the thoughts are looking at a two or three-year contract arrangement with that provider. Has that been discussed at this point or that's coming down the road for a little bit later in our discussions perhaps? Or thoughts on what you see happening with that potential outsourcing?
Yeah, those conversations are happening right now. So yes, you're right. There, there might be an option to have two different, probably like a payment type rate. We'd have a membership for the BSRC and then separate admissions for the climbing wall. So just depending on how these conversations go, if there's a partnership that we can try and work out that there's maybe some shared services. I'm sure those conversations, you know, will come up as well. I really can't say one way or the other. What that end final agreement will look like, but we are trying to look at a number of options.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's all from right now. Thank you.
Yeah, councillor Bernhard.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Ms. Cuthbert. Exciting times. It's it's fun to watch the excitement all over your face as you're talking about the plans that are in place and the things that are happening. And you've, you've done a fantastic job doing the transitioning. So that's something I just wanted to say to you. I do have two questions and one is regarding the, the use of the facilities by CBOs. And just if there's anything you can share about the flooring. I know that was one of the concerns that if other events wanted to take place within the, within the field house or with on the ice surface that we couldn't use. And of course, we wouldn't want to spoil the, the opportunity for the primary users. But is there anything in place to order the flooring so that there can be a temporary use of those facilities?
Yes, that's a great question. Yes, I think there is conversations and we've been looking into some different options, whether that's a turf cover. So that would be like a hard turf cover would be able to put over top of the field turf and possibly that would work the same in the arena. There's another option where this, this turf should be able to come up. Now that sounds really easy to say that we're just going to pop all the turf up and we'll be able to have another event, but I think it's a little bit harder than that. And of course, that we're going to learn that in the next couple of months as we're getting into that facility and start working with clerk builders and get some hands on. So there's been no request at this point in time for us to come or no plan for us to purchase some turf cover or hard cover. But that might be coming because that is very likely that we're probably going to be asked that. You know, especially in that field house, that turf is yeah, is very nice, very nice level of turf. We sure don't want to be damaging it by having events or like a trade show or, you know, pulling a truck in there or. Yeah. So we are looking at that and I said, that's probably what the best answer I could give you at the moment.
Okay. So it sounds like there needs to be a request before that can actually happen. Okay. And the second part of that question is around catering services, kitchen facilities. My understanding is right now there isn't a commercial kitchen being built in the facility so that it would be a requirement to bring in any kind of catering services if that was required for an event. Is that correct?
You are correct. There is no commercial kitchen. I think if we had that request, honestly, we would probably try to recommend them use the community center. Because they have all those services, but sometimes size is, is your limit and there's a capacity issue. And field houses are being used more and more for large events. So I think it'd be something that we'd have to work with. If we have a floor, if we need to work with caterers. I mean, it happens all over the time where caterers can bring in food and beverage, things like that with hot boxes and, you know, make dish pits out of dressing rooms. I, I've seen it all. So there's all kinds of different options that we can look at right now.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the answers.
Thank you. Next up is the mayor.
I thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation today and it's nice to see this building finally starting to come to fruition. I did want to have a bit of a, more of a philosophical discussion with members of council and with members of admin around the cost recovery model. I mean, we've, right now you're set at 50% and I assume that's what we've set our fees and charges for is to recover that 50%. But is that a level that's standard in the industry? What, what do we normally get? And is council comfortable with that level of recovery? Do we want more? Do we want less? So that's sort of a conversation I'd like to see today. So I guess the first question is, is, is what's a typical cost recovery for a facility of that type?
I think cost recovery varies from facility, facility into communities. And it's not all widely shared, but I think 50% is a very reasonable approximate. You know, some of them are 40%. Some of them go all the way up to 70%. So 70% would be really, really high cost recovery. It would be quite a challenge, I would say. I think 50% is a fairly normal average.
Thoughts from members of council, the fees and charges are pretty, pretty close to what's out there without, throughout the industry. There's a very especially in terms of the field house, they vary a bit from the document that was originally put out when we started this to the business plan we saw now. I think it jumped from 80 to 110. Are we comfortable with, with that?
The last comment, Mayor Stewart, it kind of crackled on me in mind. What was the last thing, your last couple of sentences you said there?
Well, the original, like the original business plan that we saw had the house rental based on a 50% cost recovery at $80 an hour and our current cost recovery at 50% is 110. So I'm sort of wondering if that was standard throughout the whole facility or how we got that? If, if, yeah. Well, looking to see where council's heads at in return, in terms of pricing.
For me, the, the key thing about pricing is that we make it affordable. I'm assuming that's what you're referring to with the 70% cost recovery. Miss Cuthbert, is that, that that's going to make, doing that's going to make fees unreasonably high beyond the means of many residents perhaps. Is, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. And, and, and the other, and the other driver for me is, is we've got to be competitive with, with similar facilities elsewhere in the region. So obviously the Duke Millennium Place. And I guess the Meadows, although there's a lot more on offer there. So maybe they can afford it. So maybe we need to undercut them a bit. And then my question is, well, where does that kind of fee structure leave us on a, on a cost recovery? And I, I, I'm looking at it, I guess, from the reverse perspective to you. Does that leave us with the cost recovery that we're comfortable with?
That's what the mayor's question of council is right now. Councillor Danlock, I've seen your arm waving on the subject here.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not too sure how to jump in because I know there's hands raised, but I want to make sure we talk this topic before we go into the topic. So I guess my memory escapes me right now. Perhaps you may help people remember it better than I can, but I remember Jim Carey coming to talk to us from BR2, one of his assistants talking about cost recovery models. And I thought it was higher than 50%. We were sort of projecting, and the mayor in my mind about this discussion later on in my comments later on, on the cost recovery model, I thought it was higher than the 50% when we were talking about at a, at a last time when Jim Carey was here presenting to us. Now, if my memory wrong, guys, was it higher than 50% or was it around?
Your memory is not entirely wrong. We were talking cost recoveries on the field houses are generally higher. But recoveries on things like the arena and the pools are abysmally low. And so a 50% melded for the whole building is actually pretty good. Okay. I remember that conversation and Amanda, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but.
I would say, yeah, that sounds correct.
Councillor Hendricks, I see you're looking to win.
Yes, please. The the entire rate structure is by, by way of definition has been developed over a long period of time. And for all sorts of reasons, I, I'd argue a derivative would be simpler to put together than the way this thing has because it's tied to, for example, like our, our arena package is tied to discussions with the user groups. And it's also modeled against what the Duke does and, and in their facility. And it's been a work in progress over all these years. The pool. Certainly there's a need to be competitive in the region. You know, we've got swim clubs, other people that you know, if you, if you take the number somewhere, they're going to go somewhere else. So you got to be mindful of that. So that's all been worked through all these lines. It's not just one straight painted the brush 50%. Let's make it a cost recovery issue. It's not, it's never been that simple. Lots and lots of consultation with all the groups and, and the outside user groups and also the region. Ladue County, others have all participated. So to have the conversation today and say, well, let's, let's restart that. I think it's 10 to four on a, on a Tuesday. It's, it's a huge, huge, huge discussion that probably needs a lot of time and effort and, and some more deep thinking before we just put a, a percentage to it for, you can really tip the apple cart here with participation usage, you name it. If, if, if you just put a broad stroke to it. So I'd be very careful if we're going to just make sort of a, a position today that speaks to how the whole performer works for the building. So.
Yeah. Thanks, councillor Hendricks. I think the way I saw the, the cost modeling presented here today was more the outcome of careful consideration to this point when it comes to your fees. So when it comes to conversations with the user groups where it comes to things being competitive in the region and stuff, I, I took that number as more as the outcome of all the careful consideration regionally. So that's kind of where my head was at on. So whether or not I was comfortable or not with it today or not, I think for me was a little bit ir. Um so whether or not I was comfortable or not with it today or not, uh I think for me was a little bit irrelevant. It was more that all the things that should have been considered have been considered and this is where we've ended up, so that's just my two cents on it. So my councillor Danlock.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Jazza, follow then, so I appreciate the comments before, I'm not suggesting we open the can of worms on it all. But my memory's escaped me from what was discussed previously, so I think Amanda, is it fair to say that the assumption in this proposal? Uh are more sort of the, not the best case, but definitely not, not the worst case either, there's more of a reasonable expectation of return and recovery. And if we're lucky, things go well, we maybe get fifty-five or sixty, if we're lucky, but fifty is in that ballpark range, is that a reasonable way to present the information?
Yeah, I think our goal is fifty percent is what we're trying to work to, uh there's going to be a lot of unknowns coming up, so you're right, that can fluctuate and go down a little bit. Um and things can change, but uh we do also know that our field house is going to be quite popular. So uh arena might, we might start seeing some um out-of-town groups start using our facility outside of our allocated space for our local users. So we know those contacts are coming, so you know, I'm confident that we're going to have a very full facility. So we are hoping that we can get that uh cost recovery up a little bit higher than fifty percent. That's definitely, you know, our intent, but yeah, very, we're really shooting for that fifty percent.
Cool, uh mayor.
And just to follow up my comments, I'm not, I'm not trying to open up the conversation today to reset every price in the, in in the facility. Um but this is sort of council's last gut check before we go to the, we go live to the public, I know we approved the fees and charges. Um and I did some re- and the research that was given to us and what I know from my own kids' activities and around the region. The prices are competitive um with similar facilities and so I am very comfortable with them, but I just want to make sure council's good. Before this goes forward, if we want to, if we want to lower the prices or raise the prices or do whatever. This is, this is council's opportunity to give their sort of operating philosophy on the building. And so. You're comfortable and you don't want to open it up and I, and to be fair, there's been an extensive amount of work done and I'm, and I'm currently happy to go with it. And as councillor Hendricks alluded to, if we open up this can of worms, it's, it's an open, it's, we're opening up a big can of worms. And I, and it's not going to get solved today if we open it up. Um. So yeah, well, I'm, like I say, I'm just comfortable, I just want to make sure council's heads are all, you guys are all good and. And uh we're, we're good to move forward, because I, I still would like to see a couple of different options added to, but if you're comfortable, then we're good.
Uh Ron, note the conversation on this piece, Martin, and then we'll move on to uh the next hand up on other things.
Oh, I was, I was going to reinforce what, what Mayor Stewart had just said somewhat in the. Yeah, if we did, if we did now decide, wow, we're not comfortable with fifty percent, we want to raise it. As we want to go to fifty-five or sixty or whatever the number was that we landed on. Um, yeah, I, that opens up a huge can of worms, I take it, in terms of, of redoing the schedules. And and get uh the fee schedule and getting back to, and rebalancing all the different things that recover more than others. Um it, that would, that would put us back a long way, I'm sure. And 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 hand Amanda and her department a lot more work, is is that correct?
Yeah, I could, that's, that's how I see it, Martin, you betcha.
So, yeah, okay, so then my reaction to that is, well, we better have a really strong reason for doing that. As we've, they've done what we've directed them to do so far. And and I don't have one, um but yes, if mess do, I'm sorry, I think mess do it was, was, you know. If anybody does have the opportunity, does have one, then I guess now is the time to raise it, that's. That's all.
Yeah, now, now's your opportunity, because I guess we're going forward till next year, so.
Sounds good, okay, um Martin, your hand was up before uh this side discussion started, do you have anything more else to say, otherwise I think we're.
Oh, just, yeah, um same, same, a lot of the same things that I already said, just. Very glad to see most of the stuff that's in here, um well, all of the stuff that's in here. Um was also, I'll add my two cents worth and and yes, I like to see the uh, the free swim for the over sixties. As I happen to qualify for that, um. And not just for that, I think it's a good idea as well. Um question was, you alluded, and I sense the excitement in your voice. See this going forward on time and um being able to make all these choices right now. You refer to the, on the subject of the climbing wall, I noticed that your tone of voice changed slightly. And you alluded to having a contractor being the best way to operate this as opposed to, I assume. Having our own staff do it or or um, I don't know if there are volunteer groups who would run this. Could you just explain why that is the best option? Could you just put a little bit more flesh on that bone, please?
Um operating climbing wall, and I mean, this is quite um, quite an amazing climbing wall. I don't know what the height is, but uh you do need to have certified climbing specialists uh supervising. So when we looked through a little bit of a plan on how we would operate this climbing wall, you'd be looking at a ratio of one to three, one to four. So for every one instructor, you could have four children on that wall, kind of what we were looking at. Um assuming that that age demographic is going to be uh kind of your younger pre-teen age. Um so looking at staffing with four sides to the wall, four people on a wall, that's four staff members at one time, just during our, you know, one hour. It is very costly to operate that wall, um and to try and find staff that have those certifications. This isn't something that we can put out and and bring in somebody, you know, paying the minimum wage, somebody who's worked at Dairy Queen or something before. These people do need to have thousands of hours of training to be able to have the certification to be a climbing wall specialist that we can hire. Um so it does limit the amount of staff that are available out there, uh we certainly um don't have any currently on staff. Um and I think there's probably some qualified in Beaumont, I just don't know about how many, we'd be looking at bringing staff into Beaumont. Um to be able to offer this service, uh when we took a look at what that service would look like, it seemed to be the best option uh financially. Um and to be able to, from a staff point of view, to have a specialist come in and take that opportunity if they were interested in run that wall.
Okay, great, thank you, so it's not, it's not just like having a lifeguard for the swimming pool, right? There's a whole extra bunch of certification and 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 staffing levels that have to be addressed.
I would say it's actually quite similar to lifeguard, lifeguards just have to have, you know, hundreds and hundreds of hours worth of training to be able.
Yep.
Education, so yeah, I would say there's some similarities there, um that, yeah, it's not that easy to just pick them up and, you know.
And hire them.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, thank you, appreciate the, the explanation.
Perfect, well, uh for me, thank you very much for bringing that up, the operational update forward. I think it was awesome to be able to see that and be able to show uh next, the next level of detail to the community. So looking for a motion from the uh one member of the committee to accept information, councillor Barnhart. Uh all in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, uh thank you, uh just like to call a brief recess now uh to go into closed session. Uh number four here, and if administration could let us know when we're ready to resume, that'd be great, thank you.
Uh can I make the motion before you have your break so that we don't have to be in public, so move to going.
Let's do that, thank you, mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous to go into closed session, thank you. There are no motions arising from any of the issues discussed in closed session, so just moving on to. Uh the next issue, which would be councillor inquiries, I'm, I'm going to lump these together, councillor inquiries, any information items or emerging issues. Uh if any councillor or sorry, any committee member has any of those that they'd like to bring forward, uh we could do that now. Just looking for any hands raised or.
Yeah. Not today.
Okay, sounds good, uh with that, then uh like to declare the meeting, May nineteenth, many of the whole adjourned.